Thank you. We're now going to call the Wednesday, January 8th meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to Order. On Wednesday, March 29th, 2023, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act making appropriations for fiscal year 2023, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through March 31st, 2020 time, 2025. We are obviously remote today and live. I would like to welcome everyone and ask if you'd join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may impose just briefly, I would like to ask the board to observe a moment of silence. The town of Canton lost a very dedicated, outstanding servant and observed the passing of former Canton chief Kent Berkowitz. I had the pleasure and the honor of knowing Kenny personally on many occasions through Tom Eading and in various activities. He was an outstanding chief. He worked in the Canton force for over 30 years, almost half of which was as a chief. He rose up the ranks very quickly, became a sergeant or lieutenant, and then served as chief for over 17 years. Obviously, he had just retired. His passing was very untimely, and he leaves behind his widow, Holly, and his son, Ben. I would just say very quickly that those who knew Ken in the law enforcement community held him in very high regard. He had contacts and associations not only in Norfolk County, but also with the FBI, with Selective Service, or multiple state police, multiple state agencies. And to a person, they all held Ken in such great regard. And he was just one of those men that was very well respected. So we have suffered a loss in the town that will not be replaced for a long time. And obviously, our condolences to their family. If you would, join me in a moment of silence out of respect for Ken. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to call and roll Commissioner Stady.
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Shea is present. Thank you. One, two, three. Number three is reorganization of the county commissioners for the year 2025. Every year at the first annual meeting, our first business meeting, we reorganize this board.
I'd like to place the nomination, the name for chair, as Joseph Shea of Quincy is chair.
Second. Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
Like to move we close nominations, Mr. Chairman? Move we close nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
I will serve another term.
We need to vote. We need to vote. We need to vote that now. We just closed nominations.
All right. He's going to give a 10-minute speech, but I'm not going to.
Absolutely.
On the motion to make Joseph Shea the chairman for the year 2025, I'm calling Commissioner Stady.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
And I will vote for Joseph Shea.
Congratulations.
Happy to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we, do we, again, do we have an unwritten rule that the senior man is the vice chairman, or do we name the vice chair? There's no vice chair.
We don't have that. Do we?
I always thought it was the senior person, but I think Commissioner Collins is right. We don't really have one.
Yeah.
But in my mind, it generally goes to the senior person.
Yeah. I mean, yeah.
In the absence of the, where I came from, the council president, which is named every year, if the president isn't in the room, the senior person always takes the meeting over. Okay, no problem.
Richard and I are equal in every way.
I always defer to my elder statesman, but it's fine. Whatever you wish. But you're the chair, and we're happy to have you do it, all of us.
No executive session today. Number five, minutes of open session meetings of December 18th, December 30th, December 31st, and executive session of December 18th, bar approval.
Was it one that we just got? I just saw it came. I was still traveling. I saw one just came in this morning, maybe. I'm all set for two of them. I don't want to be a, I don't want to hold anybody out. I'm sure it's a small one. Was it the one for the brief meeting we had, the 31st?
So the ones we received earlier, Richard, were December 18th and December 31st, and December 30th came in this morning.
I got those. I saw something about additional minutes or something. I thought I already had those.
No, that was it. And I was fine with all three of those open meetings.
Yeah, me too. Okay. I thought there was something new, and I apologize. So let's see. I'll move, Mr. Chair, if you want. I'll move approval of December 18th as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the open session meeting in December 18th. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote next, the 2030s.
Right. I'll move approval of December 30th as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
December 31st.
I'll move approval of those as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? And executive session of December 18th.
Yep, that's fine. I'll move approval of the executive session of December 18th as presented with the stipulation they shall not be released until such time, Mr. Chair declares they may be released. The matter has been resolved. So moved.
Motion made and seconded of the executive session minutes of December 18th. All in favor?
Aye.
I held until Chair rules it can be released. Number five, we have an appointment today with our director of Norfolk County, our SVP, our volunteer program, Robert Pearson. Hello, Robert. Have a seat.
Hello, Commissioner. Happy New Year. Congratulations on making it through well and successfully through another year.
Thank you.
So.
Hello, Robert.
Happy to see you all. John, too. So I want to give you an update first on our seventh annual Volunteer Holiday Drive. Every year, we collect from a list of about 30 different person care items for active-duty military as well as letters and cards. We've got more this year from kids, which is nice as well. We have most of the donations, close to half, from the Walpole Council agency. 20 boxes of items have come out to over 2,000. Additionally, from Medfield, Sharon, Norfolk, and right here from our office, we have additional items for about a little over 4,000. And lastly, as last year, is an organization from Walpole that makes shampoos. It's been donated about 1,000 bottles of shampoo and conditioner. And fortunately for me and my caravan, they're going to be brought down by the company directly to Cape Cod, so we don't have to bring them down. But this is, every year, it's really astounding to see how many donations come through. It doesn't take that much effort. Couple of ads in the Denham, you know, in the Denham Times, flyers put out in town. We've been doing it, as I said, for seven years to these same locations. And every year, people love to donate. So on Friday, we're going to be going with a little caravan to deliver all the items to Cape Cod Cares for our troops out of Falmouth. That's it on the holiday drive. I will just mention that over the holidays, we sent out to all of our volunteers $30 Stop and Shop gift cards. And the number of responses, it really goes to show, especially for retirees, to have extra money to do a weekly shop. I mean, they were so surprised and grateful, so many of them. One said, oh, I think I'll get lost this time. And, you know, some of them said, oh, that's like half my budget for the week. I get to really go to town. So that's, I think, a really wonderful gift that we all make possible for people. And lastly, we are getting ready to do a quarterly mileage reimbursement. About 40 of our volunteers, actually, I should say 60, about 40 are rides for vet drivers. But the other volunteers who just drive back and forth to their site are able to get mileage reimbursement, too. And each quarter, you pay out and along with the federal grant, about $4,000 a quarter. So again, people appreciate it. So thank you. That's all I got.
You go over again, the Stop and Shop guys. They go to the volunteers or do they go to the?
They go to all the volunteers.
Clients. They go to the volunteers.
They go to the volunteers. Yeah, that's what the grant allows.
Okay. So what comes from the grant?
It comes from the grant money and from the commission's. So you allow volunteer recognition funds as well. So it's great. It's great. I really love sending out gifts. That's all I got.
Commissioners, any questions or discussions with Robert?
If I could, real quick. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robert, good to see you. Sorry, I'm not able to join you today, but good to see you and keep up the great work. Rides for Vets program, how is that doing? Are you holding your own on that? Are we getting more drivers, less? How's that program working?
Thank you for asking. It's pretty steady. It's usually a little busier during the holidays, but we've been keeping up with it. We have had a number of volunteers this year that have been more available during the Christmas week. So we had probably about five or six rides on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. And we were successful, I believe, at every one of them. There are occasions where we, it's difficult to have volunteer drivers going, especially in the morning into downtown Boston for appointments. So sometimes we're not successful at finding drivers for that, but we are always looking for new drivers, especially in the western part of the county.
Right. Okay. Well, that's, it's a great program. And whenever I go out and I'm talking to different people, you mention it, you always get a good, positive response. It's a great thing. Great thing we do, one of many.
I always hear that somebody's always surprised. One of our riders out in your town of Canton says, Commissioner Stady always comes up to me. I'm surprised he remembers me. He knows who I am. And so that's really nice.
He's a good gentleman. He does a lot. It's not easy. He's one of those ones you constantly keep seeing in different ways. So he's, like many of your volunteers, great job. Great job, everybody. Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Robert. Well, Happy New Year.
Thank you very much.
Good work. Thank you. See you. Oh.
John Cronin. I beg your pardon. I had to dive out. Just a quick question. Commissioner, for you, I just want to take this moment to let the commissioners know this was likely the last time you'll see Robert in his capacity as RSVP director. He's retiring at the end of next month. And as long, my best wishes to Robert. We'll have time to say goodbye locally and in our office, but more publicly, I just want to acknowledge all the great work he's done, along with Chris Goldsmith, who is out on leave right now. But Robert's given many years to the program. He's incredibly dedicated to it. He's very fastidious, working with the grant, working with all the volunteers. It's been a pleasure to work with you, and I really wish you all the best. But most of all, I just wanted to publicly, through Commissioner Shea, express our support and thank you, Robert.
We'll do it again in a formal manner.
Yes, sir, but.
And give him that huge check.
Chair, although it's not that long.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Robert, when did you come? When did you come to the county?
It's 10 and a half years. September, if we do the math, September 2014.
16, 14?
14. Or 15. September 2015. No, 2014. John is correct. And I will say, even though John gave me the send-off now, I'd be happy to give you kind of like a real full review of the program before I leave next month, if you all would like.
I'd like to do that. Now, I do know you're involved in helping us find a successor.
Yes.
I think we should wrap it all into one and talk about it before you leave.
Good. I'd love to give you an update on the status of the program.
Right. And when can we expect Chris back?
He should be back to at least part-time at homework next Monday.
Okay, so we'll have access to him when you're, okay.
Yes, he should be back in person.
I'll be anxious to get you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you.
After some reason, I don't have a number six on my.
Is there a six? I don't have a six.
I don't believe there's a six. I think it's a typo. I don't think we're missing anything, but I'll check. Number seven, public comment period. Each week at our meetings, we have a public comment period for anyone out in Zoom land that's listening to us or anyone that comes in to address the board. This is the time to do it. So if there's anyone that has any reason to say hello or address the board, you want to do it now, please. Director Cronin, have you had any comments or any questions from anyone?
No, sir.
Anyone want to speak? Okay, last call for public comment. No public comment. Number eight, old business. We have none today. Number nine, personal matters for consideration. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd please you to make the motion for this. At the Norfolk County Cultural High School, move approval of the notice of resignation of Madeline Becker of Marion Mass as a substitute instructor at the rate stated, and that would be effective 3/1, I believe, 25. It should be 3/125. On the script, it says 24. I'm sure it's a typo. I hope it is.
John Cronin, please. Yes.
The stated date is accurate, Commissioner Stady?
Oh.
You missed it?
No, in this matter, our Human Resources Department is working with the school to clean up some previously unpermed-out individuals. So this individual's separation was never formalized. It is today through your action effective March 1st, 2020.
Okay. All right. I'll amend my motion to say that effective date 3/124. I thought it was a typo. All right. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded on the resignation of Marilyn Becker at the school. All in favor? Aye. It is a vote. Two FMLAs, if you could do a description for us. Thank you.
I'll read the first one, Mr. Chairman. Notice of FMLA effective 1/13/25 code 01-01.
Second. Motion made and seconded on the first FMLA known as 0-01. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next one.
The second one is a notice of FMLA effective 2/5/25, and the code given is 02-01.
Right. Second. Motion made and seconded on FMLA known as 02-01. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
That's all we had.
Paywall expense warrants, I believe, Commissioner Collins.
You have those written?
You have written those.
I don't have them, Peter. I'll defer to you, sir.
Okay. I'll make a motion. We approve the warrant for 25-27 payroll to the county in the amount of $143,378.95.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. It is a vote.
The next is a motion for warrant 25-27, open parentheses, 14, close parentheses, payroll to the school in the amount of $385,798.43.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. It is a vote. Next.
The next motion is for warrant 1-7-25 Wallston Immigration Facility credit card payment in the amount of $1,111.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Next.
The next motion is to approve warrant 01-02-25 expense to the county in the amount of $1,314,114.86.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The last item is to approve the motion for the warrant 25-07 expense to the school in the amount of $98,797.39.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Aye. It is a vote. That completes the payroll and expense warrants. Director Cronin.
Commissioner, through you, if you wouldn't mind if I asked Commissioner Stady, if she uses a stamp for any of the actions through your votes today that require signature.
Most certainly. No problem. Permission granted.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Number 11, report. Procurement Department on bid openings and contract awards. No reen. Nothing today, okay? No bid awards or contract awards. Stay tuned for next week. Number 12, opioid grant awards for Norfolk County community organizations from National Opioid Settlement. I'm going to have Director Cronin explain this. I think this is the second year of this program.
It is. Thank you.
Director Cronin.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Briefly, commissioners, back in 2022, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts began receiving funds from national organizations, primarily pharmacies and so forth, that were involved in the prescriptive use and application of opioids through the settlement agreement with the various user entities, I should say. The Attorney General's Office of the Commonwealth set up a fund through which the settlement funds could flow to communities across the state. Norfolk County was a participant in the first round of these funds that primarily bridged the gap between FY '23 and FY '24. These awards came from a host of different areas, including Johnson &amp; Johnson Incorporated, Janssen Incorporated, Walgreens, Teva, Allergan, and CVS. In 2023, the county, excuse me, the county received $20,573.82. In fiscal year '24, the county received $27,045.43. During this first round, as Commissioner Shea just indicated, Norfolk County Commissioners partnered with the Norfolk County District Attorney, Michael Morrissey's office, to allow the flow of funds through a program to each of the Norfolk County Coalition members. And in FY '23, the county expended $19,111.93 to 15 different organizations, allowing these monies to reach groups that handle substance abuse and then strategies to deal with those kind of social issues. This afternoon, as we enter the second round of, the second phase of this program, we again have partnered with the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office to reach approximately 20 coalition members and one additional home in Rentham Mass called Gilly's House. These 21 total partners were given the opportunity to apply for the remaining balance of funds associated with this program. We opened up the opportunity this past fall and we're again receiving applications through November. As we were primarily using the month of December to close ARPA, we paused on the distribution of these funds until now. I'm happy to report to the commissioners that in addition to the funds I just mentioned that had been received in FY '23, '24, the county has thus far received, as of September 6, 2024, an additional $12,307. We have a total balance of funds that may be distributed, remaining of $40,814.50. We have asked these organizations to make applications each now for $1,500, which is a $500 increase above last year's. And before you are successful applications from 11 out of the 21 organizations. We've reviewed the applications and found them eligible. I want to thank Maureen Lyden from our Human Resources area, who's acted as my liaison with these groups, helping to coordinate the messaging with them to ensure that they are aware of what we're trying to do. She's going to continue to try to chase down the other 10 communities, coalitions, I should say, to make sure that they may be eligible for this program. So today, I request your favorable action on awarding 11 grants to the communities that have been mentioned in the packet that you have been delivered for this meeting. I'd be happy to go through any details associated with the applications, Commissioner Shea, if you see fit. Other than that, we are looking forward to moving at least the first round of funding in FY '25 associated with this latest phase of the opioid program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Director Cronin? Again, this is the second, maybe it's the third year. I forget.
Well, we're in the third year. It's the second time we're doing it, yeah.
I think we decided collectively to work with the district attorney because he already had the pipeline to the various cities and towns. Something like 18 out of 28 or more than that had already had a committee set up for this. They know better than we do. And, you know, I think we're happy with the results of last year and we want to repeat it again. Other than that, I have no comment.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, great job by John. Thank you. Do we have to, do we need to vote to ratify each of those recommendations of where he wanted to send them out and then that Letty has sent us, John?
Yes.
Because you know what? No, my concern was, I think on Gilly House, I couldn't find them out. I saw each town, but then it said vote to award Gilly up to, but there wasn't a number in there. So I didn't know what we were doing on that.
The Gilly's House application, Commissioner, on the detail mentions a range of issues that they would like funded. In conversations with the Gilly House founder, Barbara Gilmeister, I believe her name is.
Yep.
He indicated that we're running a program that is offering the same amount to every applicant. She said we'd be grateful for any amount of money the commissioner saw fit to deliver to us. And she also iterated again her open invitation to the commissioners to come to the Gilly House and rent them for a visit. She was very enthusiastic about the opportunity to show the commissioners the good work they do. So through this proposal today, Commissioner Stady, we're we're offering $1,500 to the Gilly House, as we are with all the other coalition members, consistent with the details and the requests that they put in their application.
But that doesn't exclude them from working with us in the future either.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So you're recommending that Gilly House will get 1,500 along with the other places, right? And then maybe we can revisit Gilly at a later date or something, so you're saying, maybe?
If that is the commissioner's wish, yes. Would you like to be the other communities that are impacted by this proposal?
Sure.
The first is the town of Braintree, Canton, Cohasset, Franklin Safe Coalition, the SUP program in Medway, the Substance Abuse Prevention Alliance of Needham, the Randolph Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, the Walpole Coalition for Alcohol and Drug Awareness, the Wayman Substance Abuse Prevention Team, Healthy KP in King Philip, Rentham, I should say. Thank you. And finally, as Commissioner Stady indicated, Gilly's House in Rentham, Massachusetts. So those are the 11 organizations that have successfully made applications.
Okay. Any other questions?
The total amount is $16,500 distributed evenly.
And that's up from last year a little bit? Okay, here's my question. Will we have it next year?
The, great question. The program set up, the settlement agreement set up by the Attorney General's Office goes on for, I believe, 10, maybe 20 years. The amount of money that we're expected to receive each year is somewhere in the $4,000 to $5,000 range. So the program we're setting up is a scalable program to distribute the funds. So although we'll distribute approximately 16, maybe 20,000 this year, we still carry a balance that will see $4,000 to $5,000 add. Next year, we kind of keep the program going each year, pushing the money out to these eligible organizations. That's the plan.
Yeah, it's good. I mean, sometimes you read about these things and you never hear about it, but it's good to hear about it. And, you know, you realize that, again, they know best way to do this. Who needs this money, so I'm sure. And if, you know, the structure's all set up, I'd just stay in at least for this year. Okay. Well, it's necessary, I believe, that we vote these? And then the check is in the mail?
Well, what will happen next is we'll alert the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office that these communities have received your favorable vote. We'll draft letters, grant awards, send them to the district attorney, get his signature. They'll come back here. We'll have you sign these award letters, and then we'll place the amount on an upcoming warrant for the distribution.
Okay.
I expect that to be all in the next two, three. I expect that to be all in the next two, three weeks.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, if you want, I'd be glad to make a motion.
Yes.
Uh, if you said, I'll move approval of the, uh, second round of Norfolk County opioid grants uh, in a total amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars, I believe, uh, for the towns that were outlined in the memo from Director Cronin dated January seventh, twenty twenty-five, set funds to include, uh, those towns and also, uh, in white is gonna go to a Gillie's House and rent them as described. So moved.
Motion made and seconded to grant the awards to Norfolk County communities from the opioid grant program. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you very much.
You.
Number fifteen, fiscal year twenty-six budget memo and schedule. Commissioners, in your package is a memorandum from John Cronin to our department heads dated January ninth. I assume it's gonna go up tomorrow. It's January ninth, relative to the calendar and budget building for twenty twenty-six. Any questions? Includes actual dates of our calendar, so to speak. It runs from January second, January ninth to May fourteenth. It's the last page. John, explanation?
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Bill, if you'd be so kind as to bring up the memo on monitor for those watching, um, this, um, memorandum will go to the department heads tomorrow. It outlines, it's a dozen each year, the details and guidance for, uh, each department to follow as they build, in this case, their FY twenty-six budget. Um, not much has changed. I announced that I don't see, um, revenue changing dramatically, um, from their FY twenty-five foothold. We are meeting our benchmarks currently for FY twenty-five budget. The economic indicators seem to suggest that leveling that to FY twenty-six is the most modest and sensible path, so we'll do that on the revenue side. Um, we are asking again that departments put a cover memo together that includes their request for any operational needs as well as any capital needs. Um, I again caution the Commissioners, um, against any commitment towards capital budgeting for FY twenty-six. That'll be wholly dependent on how we close the year in FY twenty-five. And what kind of resources might present themselves for discersment into that kind of a program. Yet, it is always good to know what the department, uh, heads need and foresee, uh, both operationally, operationally and from a, um, capital perspective. These guidelines offer details to the department heads and the users to follow in the, uh, excuse me, in the specific, uh, title of program, budget sense. Um, I'm asking department heads to currently plan for a zero point zero zero percent COLA for FY twenty-six. And that is purely reflective of the fact that we're actively involved, um, in contract negotiations, um, at, at the county level as well as the schools, and the COLA numbers are unknown at this time. So what we plan on doing is, once the COLAs associated with any collective bargaining agreements are settled, they will draw from a centralized reserve account, which I'll fund when we develop the FY twenty-six budget, basically a transfer. So, um, until we know that number, we're just asking departments plan for a zero percent and will adjust any COLAs, uh, down the road when we finalize the budget in the next several months. Um, and as Commissioner Shea indicated, um, the budget memo does include a timetable, and I'd just like to mention them briefly today. Um, the departments will, um, be required to submit their budgets to the Commissioners on February fourth. Uh, two weeks later, um, two weeks later today, on February nineteenth, the department budget reviews will be held, um, first with the agricultural high school, Wallace and recreational facility and facility maintenance. A week later, excuse me, you will have the department budget reviews with the Commissioners, uh, for the Registry of Deeds, Engineering, the Treasurer's Office, and then finally on March fifth, the department budget reviews will wrap up with the Commissioners' Office, Information Technology, and Regional Services. This, um, process follows a very similar schedule you all have seen in the last several years. Um, on March twelfth, um, there'll be a public hearing on the FY twenty-six budget. On March twenty-sixth, we propose that the Commissioners will be positioned to have a vote on the FY twenty-six budget. Um, as the Commissioners may know, when we schedule the advisory board for FY twenty-five, we identified April sixteenth as the timeframe in the spring when the Finance Committee and Advisory Board will meet. And in this case, they will deal with, uh, of course, supplemental issues as well as the FY twenty-six budget. Uh, following on May fourteenth, there will be another final vote of the advisory board to consider a final vote on it. So our schedule, uh, as I mentioned, replicates what we've done in the past. Not a lot of serious dev- deviations. Um, we will communicate these, uh, details to the advisory board, um, shortly. Probably send this budget memo out to Eric and Dr. Childs following, uh, today's meeting. That is your update for FY twenty-six. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioners, any questions or comments on the budget calendar for fiscal twenty-six?
Yeah, I'll have to get back to, uh, the director. It might be a problem on the date of the vote, um, in March. I'd wanna talk to you about that. Do, do you know, by the way, Mr. Chairman, through you or anyone, has anyone made an effort to concern themselves with extending the remote process? Because it expires pretty soon. If that's not continued, that's gonna put a cramp in a lot of meetings that a lot of us have.
I think Director Cronin has an.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up in my, uh.
Okay, okay, okay. We can work around that then. That's, uh, all right. So then I wanna talk, I'll talk.
Each week when I read it, I, 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 you know, March twenty-fifth is fast approaching.
Right. That's why I wanted to talk to John about the timing on that. If it could be either pushed up or back or forth or whatever, but, um, we'll talk, we'll talk to you tomorrow.
That's why we wanna get it out as soon as we can. Is there any questions, uh, amendments? We can, we'll handle it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're pushing the budget schedule?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget schedule. Um, at least for now, uh, and it may need to be amended to a, a, a committed, um, Commissioner Stady's schedule.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the budget session memo as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Fourteen, report of the County Director.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea, and a few items. Um, individuals in county government who, um, have been identified, um, as being in a policymaking decision should be receiving um, letter or email from the State Ethics Commission. Um, this is an annual process that I believe the Commissioners might be familiar with
Yeah.
that notifies these individuals to file their on, online statement of financial interest. I believe the deadline is May twenty-fifth this year. So, um, if anybody has any questions relative to that program, please contact Michelle Lavadine. Uh, next, the Commissioners will note, uh, on today's agenda, it's the first time in a few years you did not see an ARPA update or an ARPA award piece. Uh, as I mentioned last week, we've moved into a monitoring phase on this grant. Uh, consequently, the updates relative to this program will be coming to you on a monthly basis. I'm gonna try to pulse these meetings through the Chair's, um, permissions to the first meeting of every month. Uh, we'll give you updates on how any transfer requests are coming in and or monitoring issues and things of that nature. Um, so it's just reflective of the new phase that we're in with the ARPA. Uh, I wanna let the Commissioners know that we, we, we received an email from AFSMI, um, looking for a collaborative meeting between the Registry of Deeds and the Commissioners' Office through my, through my office to discuss, um, some of the issues with the hiring process that, um, seemed to have some members of AFSMI confused. Um, I spoke to the President yesterday. I will be speaking with him and scheduling some time, probably by the end of this month. Um, we wanted to get to our next phase of negotiations, which is coming up next week, and, uh, then have a conversation about what that conference, what that meeting would look like. Um, and I should state publicly, the management through the Commissioners are always willing to meet and discuss union matters with AFSMI at any time. So it's just a question of when and how we can pull that off, but we do intend to, um, collaborate. Um, I just want to again mention, you may see additional opioid grants coming in in the next several weeks as communities uh, circle back to our invitation to apply. I'll let you know if we can receive any. Uh, Rentham District Court had a, um, a recent, um, public health air quality testing done, and while the air quality testing came back favorable, um, there were some recommendations made by the vendor. Uh, next Thursday, I'm due to have a Zoom call with, uh, the trial courts and Mr. McGowan to discuss ways to, um, improve the air circulation, um, and, um, filtration. So among those, and any other items that may, and the Rentham District Court is something that will need our attention in the next several weeks. Um, the Commissioners may also be aware that the Building Management System project that was funded through ARPA has been awarded. Um, Maureen McQ is working with the vendor to finalize their paperwork. We'll then be scheduling an entry meeting with the vendor and Mr. McGowan, um, as well as, um, members of his team to understand how to use this system once it's deployed. Our partners with, um, Habib Architect, who helped us draft this, uh, R F R, will also assist with any questions on the application and installation of the program. Second. Regarding the question that Commissioner Stady just asked, as, um, Commissioner Shea reads each week, the remote participation guidelines associated with the Governor's Executive Order are scheduled to end the end of March, twenty twenty-five. We've reached out to the state legislature to learn more about what type of, um, solutions they may be looking at. The Commissioners may recall that this is, uh, old ground. We, we were down this road a few years ago when the original, original executive order had an expiration date. The legislature decided to extend what was going on because, um, while we all enjoy remote participation, it has certainly opened up more, uh, transparency to the work you do on behalf of the citizens of the county. Um, it is not memorialized in law. Uh, there is a remote participation, uh, statute. It's very limited compared to what we currently do. Um, and I think what the legislature is trying to do is to figure out how ready, willing, and capable are the three hundred and fifty-one communities of Massachusetts to abide by this new law, new law, if they were to embrace this executive order as such. So we'll follow up to find out if they are ready to memorialize it in statute or if they are just examining the extension of the executive war and we'll report back.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of Director Cronin?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner.
Sure. Uh, so I have a question and then a comment. So just to let you know I'm doing. Question and comment. First, comment, I wanna give congratulations and kudos to John McGowan and his staff for a wonderful job in the courthouse. We all attended. It was great to see everyone there for the swearing in of Walter Timmeltie Junior. And, uh, the place just looked great. And again, we, we appreciate the hard work they do in getting that facility ready and everything looked great and it was a great day for everybody. It's a great day for the county. So thank you to, uh, John and his, his crew for that. Um, the other thing is through you to the Director Cronin. Uh, we've received several letters from the Registrar of Deeds, and he has to, has, keeps questioning about the, uh, the makeup of the committee or whatever, and we're talking about meeting with AFSMI. Is there some way we can get an answer to the registrar? Definitely, I, I think it has to do with the actual makeup of the team or the bargaining team or something. I, I saw one today. I've probably seen one last week. You're probably getting them. Is that something that we can talk about or is that something we shouldn't talk about or wanna talk about? I see John mentioned about meeting with AFSMI. So before we start doing that, we need to get that cleared up, maybe?
Director Cronin.
Uh, extension discussion on it is prohibited under the open meeting laws. It's not on our agenda, but I will alert you, Commissioner, that um, the registrar's inquiry has been noted and it is being addressed through council. Um, so we'll respond accordingly. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Okay. We don't wanna hold that up. All right. That was all I had. Thank you very much.
One, one question I need to.
Director Cronin, yes.
I previously mentioned that the Statement of Financial Interest filing was May twenty-fifth. I was incorrect. It's May twenty-seventh.
Okay. Is that every year, John? I thought it was only once every four years.
Every year, every minute.
Okay.
I knew it was, they must have sent the notice out because my wife mentioned to me over the holidays.
It's, it's just.
She kind of advises me on this and, and then when I get here, uh, um, Michelle.
Lots of things come out here the first of the year.
Um, it's good to be reminded.
I saw it. We got time.
Okay, thank you. Um, I also, uh, and, and Commissioner Collins, we were all at swearing in of Walter Timmeltie. It was a great event. It was great to see, uh, his father and mother and, uh, see a lot of people that we work with, but I will say that, uh, anytime we have something in that great old building, it's a, it's a credit and courtesy. Although the building is handicap accessible and wasn't built a handicap accessible building, uh, they just don't build, I don't know how else to say it. They just don't build buildings like that anymore. When I left with, uh, a few folks that I was hooked to ride home with, were down the back staircase. And, uh, you know, it's, it mirrors the front one, but my God, they just don't make the marble, the woodwork, everything. And as you go down, you can't help. Gotta be careful. But you can't help but, uh, realize what a great building it is and, and the job they do keeping it up because, uh, it, there is a reason that we get all this companies in the mill that wanna use that building because, uh, it's just a great old building and that. We have other good buildings too. And, uh, they do a good job on keeping them up, but it was good to see everyone. It was a good event. And, uh, we'll look forward to working with Walter.
Well, it was nice that you had followed up. We said, uh, it was nice for the new clerk to acknowledge, uh, the new roof that the Commissioners, you know, all of us worked on.
I think it was Joe Ritten that mentioned it. That's correct.
Oh, Joe, I thought it was Walter, but I know someone mentioned.
Maybe it was Walter. I'm sorry.
Great, it was great. But very, very, uh, uh, of course, our treasurable Lordy was there. Our sheriff did a good job singing his, his honor guard. It's a wonderful county event. Really was. Nice day. Nice day for the county.
Okay, number fifteen, emergency items, the topics the Chair did not reasonably anticipate to be discussed. I have none. Uh, other than to wish everyone for the last time a Happy New Year. Our calendars are gonna be, uh, filling up and, uh, we look forward to an excellent twenty twenty-five.
Sounds good. See you next week.
Last call. Any other comments? Take a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn at, uh, one five oh, one fifty?
Second. Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Very much. This meeting is adjourned. We have a full meeting, uh, next week, January fifteenth.